And I'll get the Rodney, the marshal, to bring up our sheet. Thank you, buddy. Everything good at home?
Yes, sir.
Good. To start this meeting off, I love to start everything off with prayer and the pledge. Reverend Johnny, you going to stand up? And everybody knows this guy. I'm going to tell you, when he has meetings at the, in James's office, I think you're the chairman up there, right?
I am.
He always comes to my office on those days, and we have prayer when I'm in there. He lifts me up every day, and he lifts up his county every day, so he's a special person. He's married to Augustine, he's been married for forty-nine years. Actually, you got an anniversary coming up just in a couple of days, don't you?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth. And he's the pastor of a Silo Baptist Church for forty-five years, and very well-known in the community. He's got one daughter, Erica, I think she's the one that loves purple, that's why you wear purple suits all the time, right? One grandson, two and a half years old, and he takes care of his grandson, and that's what he enjoys doing with his gardening. I do, you do a lot of gardening.
Yes.
That's great. So everybody stand, we'll have prayer and then a pledge, but before I do that, I forgot to recognize our elected official, and it's Ashley in the back. So, just real quick, just shout out what you're excited about, what's going on, and one thing in the sheriff's department.
One thing, we're excited about some retirement, maybe.
I've been reading about that, we've been talking about that.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. Let us pray. Our Father and our great God in heaven, again we come in the name of Christ our Savior, to give you thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in this great nation. Heavenly Father, we lift up the people in Texas now. You promised us you're the God of all comfort. You comfort us in all sorrows, that we may comfort those with the same comfort wherewith you comfort us. We pray that you'd comfort them, comfort those mothers and fathers. Father bless this great nation we live in. Father bless this board and the work we are doing for the citizens of Paulding County. Remember our first responders and our sheriff officers. All of those, Lord God, who go to get up in the morning protecting us from the dangers on the highways, byways, and the crimes on the streets. We give you the praise, we give you the glory. We love you, Lord, and we thank you now. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
And amen.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
And before we start the agenda, I just want to let everybody know, it's good to see a crowd here. I try to track who actually logs on to this session, because we hear a lot of people say, "We don't know what's going on." I said, "Well, it's made available for it to you." So, we're tracking it, and so I'm going to tell you. Facebook gets the most views, so the view ship of this meeting last time on the work session was six thousand two hundred. YouTube was just one oh three, but there was a total of six thousand three hundred and three viewer ships. Now, do they stay there the whole time? We're trying to track that, but some of them get bored and get off. But if you don't know what's going on in the county, you need to log on or either be here in person. So, just a reminder that the minutes are for your review from June the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the work session, and also the same date on the board, meeting minutes. And June the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, special call meeting minutes are available for anybody's review. Announcements today, we're going to have a quick video on the Team Paulding recap of July the fourth. How many went to the fireworks? Did y'all go? They were good, wasn't they? In both cities, they were great. So if y'all can start that, that'd be great. Thank you, buddy. Everything good at home?
Yes, sir.
Good. To start this meeting off, I love to start everything off with prayer and the pledge. Reverend Johnny, you going to stand up? And everybody knows this guy. I'm going to tell you, when he has meetings at the, in James's office, I think you're the chairman up there, right?
I am.
He always comes to my office on those days, and we have prayer when I'm in there. He lifts me up every day, and he lifts up his county every day, so he's a special person. He's married to Augustine, he's been married for forty-nine years. Actually, you got an anniversary coming up just in a couple of days, don't you?
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth.
Yes.
And he's the pastor of a Silo Baptist Church for forty-five years, and very well-known in the community. He's got one daughter, Erica, I think she's the one that loves purple, that's why you wear purple suits all the time, right? One grandson, two and a half years old, and he takes care of his grandson, and that's what he enjoys doing with his gardening. I do, you do a lot of gardening.
Yes.
That's great. So everybody stand, we'll have prayer and then a pledge, but before I do that, I forgot to recognize our elected official, and it's Ashley in the back. So, just real quick, just shout out what you're excited about, what's going on, and one thing in the sheriff's department.
One thing, we're excited about some retirement, maybe.
I've been reading about that, we've been talking about that. All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. Let us pray. Our Father and our great God in heaven, again we come in the name of Christ our Savior, to give you thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in this great nation. Heavenly Father, we lift up the people in Texas now. You promised us you're the God of all comfort. You comfort us in all sorrows, that we may comfort those with the same comfort wherewith you comfort us. We pray that you'd comfort them, comfort those mothers and fathers. Father bless this great nation we live in. Father bless this board and the work we are doing for the citizens of Paulding County. Remember our first responders and our sheriff officers. All of those, Lord God, who go to get up in the morning protecting us from the dangers on the highways, byways, and the crimes on the streets. We give you the praise, we give you the glory. We love you, Lord, and we thank you now. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
And amen.
Let's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
And before we start the agenda, I just want to let everybody know, it's good to see a crowd here. I try to track who actually logs on to this session, because we hear a lot of people say, "We don't know what's going on." I said, "Well, it's made available for it to you." So, we're tracking it, and so I'm going to tell you. Facebook gets the most views, so the view ship of this meeting last time on the work session was six thousand two hundred. YouTube was just one oh three, but there was a total of six thousand three hundred and three viewer ships. Now, do they stay there the whole time? We're trying to track that, but some of them get bored and get off. But if you don't know what's going on in the county, you need to log on or either be here in person. So, just a reminder that the minutes are for your review from June the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the work session, and also the same date on the board, meeting minutes. And June the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five, special call meeting minutes are available for anybody's review. Announcements today, we're going to have a quick video on the Team Paulding recap of July the fourth. How many went to the fireworks? Did y'all go? They were good, wasn't they? In both cities, they were great. So if y'all can start that, that'd be great. Invited guests, we have none, so we'll move right into the bid awards. The first one is discuss action to award the Stormwater Maintenance Project located at sixty-three Nor Drive to PST Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents under the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-five. Stormwater Infrastructure Replacement and Repair Unit Price Contract. Funding for the project will be allocated from Stormwater Department General Funds. This project's located in post three, Mr. Jones.
Morning. On November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, Paulding County executed the FY two thousand twenty-five Stormwater Infrastructure Replacement and Repair Unit Price Contract, otherwise known as the FY twenty-five UPC, with nine contractors. Those nine firms were pre-qualified for the contract based on the ability to perform work tasks, previous work history, and pricing of work tasks related to stormwater infrastructure. The work was categorized into three following groups. Group one, stormwater, general project items, all work required to be able to construct or repair a stormwater project. Two, asphalt paving. And three, stormline cleaning, which consisted of cleaning pipes and drainage structures. A unit price contract allows projects to be broken down in price by units as opposed to a fixed cost. The benefit of a unit price contract is the ability to select contractors for the work without providing formal bid advertisements per contract, reducing the amount of time for project identification to award to contractor. The Paulding County Stormwater Department identified the maintenance repair project located at sixty-three Aurora Drive in post three. The project consists of removal and reconstruction of the existing spillway, replacing existing concrete channel to maintain positive drainage, installation of forty-two inch reinforced concrete pipe under the road with precasted concrete head walls, and repair a sinkhole along the shoulder of the road. In addition, work included Paulding County Water Department items. Hundred and eighty linear feet of PVC water main was replaced with ductile iron pipe, insulation of steel casing and service lines for two residences, and all other items necessary to complete that work according to Paulding County water specifications. Based on the UPC pricing, CSTE was the lowest reliable bidder in the amount of one hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. If approved, this project funding will be allotted from the Stormwater General Funds. Included in this contract is a ten thousand dollar contingency for a rock. There's believed to be rock within the limits that would impact the work. This contingency will only be used if needed.
Any questions? Thank you, George.
George, do you, when was this originally built? What's the age of the structure, do you know?
I believe it's sometime in the eighties, Commissioner Dunn, but I'll check. It's old. Most of these things are, they're coming to their lifespan when it comes to these metal pipes. They have anywhere from, you know, twenty to fifty-year lifespan. It kind of gets closer to the twenty more than the fifty, honestly. A lot of it depends on the salinity, the, you know, essentially the acids in the soils, the amount of, sometimes the amount of debris running through a channel. In this case, these are stormwater pipes, so there's not like a heavy flow all the time, but...
And on these particular repair projects like this, something with that kind of age on it, do you guys re-engineer them?
We do look at these and determine, you know, is this basically a handle the flow that goes through there? Yes, we do that as part of these projects.
Okay.
And also, we look at, you know, different types of repairs. Can it be replaced, like with a type of a spin cast? Or does it have to be, you know, replaced with a new pipe, that type of thing? Try to look at the most economical and also least impactful ways to get the work done.
Sure. Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I wanted to ask, so you say that lifespan, so does that mean the thing rust out or collapses? Or what generally happens that signifies the end of life for that?
Typically, it's when it's these type of culverts, they typically rust out at the bottom of them. Obviously, other things can happen, like damage. We do have things where, you know, there's holes punched in the top, or, you know, sometimes on especially river channels, not necessarily stormwater, you know, pipes uncouple, or maybe they weren't coupled correctly together in the first place. But typically, in these type of pipes, it's the bottom of the pipes that rust out.
Okay. Any others? Thank you, George, we'll move to the next one. Let's discuss action to award the FY two thousand twenty-six contract, concrete contract one to the lowest reliable bidder, CSTE Incorporated, in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Funding for this project will be allocated from the Department of Transportation General Funds and the Stormwater Department General Funds, projects located in post one and post four.
In subdivisions in unincorporated Paulding County, on county-owned streets, Paulding County DOT maintains the concrete sidewalks and concrete curb ramps. In those same subdivisions on county-owned public streets, the Paulding County Stormwater Department maintains the drainage structures such as concrete curb and gutter, concrete catch basins, concrete drop inlets, et cetera. Installation and maintenance and repair of sidewalks and curb ramps is important for pedestrian access and safety satisfying Title II of the American With Disabilities Act, otherwise known as ADA, which requires that local governments ensure that persons with disabilities have access to pedestrian routes in the public right of way. Maintenance of curb and gutter, catch basin, and drop inlets is important to ensure efficient operation of stormwater flow that protects against flooding while also minimizing impacts to the environment. Staff prepared a list of concrete installation repair projects in multiple subdivisions in post one and post four to address DOT and stormwater safety and operational needs. The list of projects focused on sidewalks, curb ramps, curb and gutters, and catch basins. PC DOT and PC Stormwater solicited bids for this concrete work from reliable contractors who were pre-qualified to perform this work for the county. On May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, four bids were received and opened. DOT and Stormwater have reviewed the four bids and recommends award to the lowest reliable bidder, CSTE Inc., in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If approved, funding for this will be allocated from the DOT General Funds and Stormwater General Funds. And again, project locations are in post one and post four.
Any questions for George? Comment? Thank you, George, appreciate it. We don't have any reports from committees or departments at this time. We have no public participation on the agenda items. We have four consent agendas. The first one is adopt the Department of Transportation job description to senior traffic signal technician. The next one is to declare the following items listed as surplus and provide their disposal through donation to emergency service ministries. And we have one from the fire department, a ladder truck. And the next one is appoint Dyletha, I hope I pronounced that right, Walden, Calvin Thorpe, Robin Such, and Tyndale Tripp to the Library Board of Trustees with the term of July the first, two thousand twenty-five, through June the thirtieth, of two thousand twenty-eight. The last one is to realpoint Angela Jones and Peggy Wills to the Board of Elections with the term of July the first, of two thousand twenty-five, through June the thirtieth, of two thousand twenty-nine. At this time, I'd say, would you, any of the commissioners like to move any of these to new business? Okay. Thank you. We have no old business. New business, we have one, and that's to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with the Southeastern Engineering in the amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents for the preliminary engineering service for the Ridge Road widening project from SR ninety-two to Laird Road. Funding will be allocated from SPOS Funds, and this project is located in post three.
Feel like I was just up here. Ridge Road is a two-lane arterial roadway located in post two and three that connects State Route ninety-two and State Route sixty-one, provides east-west connectivity for the southern portion of Paulding County. Ridge Road in the vicinity of Laird Road and Highway ninety-two has traffic volumes ranging from sixty-four hundred to ninety-two hundred vehicles per day, which is located in post three. The proximity of the Greystone Power Headquarters, along with several parcels in this area, having commercial zoning. In the recent completion of the six-lane In the recent completion of the six-lane Highway 92 widening project, it's anticipated that this area will experience significant growth. On January 29th, 2020, the Paulding County Board of Commissioners approved entering into contract with Southeastern Engineering in the amount of $98,500.99. The contract is for the design of a four-lane roadway with a divided raised median along the section of Ridge Road to help mitigate future traffic growth by improving capacity and safety. A supplemental of $17,500 was approved on November 11th, 2020, to include additional traffic analysis for the intersection of 92 and Ridge Road. As plans progress, the commercial property located on the southwest corner of the intersection of State Route 92 and Ridge Road is being developed. Southeastern Engineering, Paulding DOT, and the developer of the, and engineer of the site coordinated on multiple iterations of development plan, as well as the Ridge Road widening plan. Through coordination with the developer and the Georgia Department of Transportation, it was determined that a redesign of the Ridge Road widening projects in this area of the commercial development on the southwest corner was required to reduce the impacts, any potential taking to that convenience store with gas pumps. On January 20th, on September 27th, 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved a supplemental in the amount of $64,658.75. Plans have progressed. The convenience store with the gas pumps has been constructed. The State Route 92 widening project has been completed, and all turn lanes open, all the traffic signals and our phases operational. With the projects being completed, the Ridge Road widening project has been progressing. Additional funds are required to finalize the preliminary engineering. Those tasks include updated development of traffic, roadway and environmental screenings, roadway design and right-of-way plans, and any additional services which may be required for right-of-way visions if required. The total request for the supplemental is $97,541.98. If approved, this funding will be allocated from SPOST. The total overall budget for this project with the engineering phases will be $278,201.72. Length of this project's roughly .5 miles. Believe with everything goes right, we'll be able to have this before the board, or at least finished up the preliminary engineering plans sometime next year.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
I'm going to say, I appreciate that you are working on this on Ridge Road, because we sure need it, and so many other roads, arterials that need work. I'm just concerned at how much we're spending on engineering, because it seems almost like some of this is redundant. Like, I mean, we did a traffic study two years ago or three years ago, and now we got to do another one? Can you explain?
We do update traffic as, you know, as these projects go along, as the, you know, roads change. Obviously, out there when this project was originally awarded, there was construction going on, the construction's now finished. When it comes to traffic, we obviously want to make sure that the design that we put in will last for 20 years. That's your main goal when it comes to widening projects. So some of this work, you know, in the area of the gas station, yes, you know, there was a redo because we did not want to do any taking of that property. That would have been a very...
Did they cover any of that cost of that redo?
No, that's not on them to cover. Unfortunately, that's on the county to cover. But, you know, these projects are expensive. Obviously, unit rates have gone up in the last few years, too, when it comes to engineering. What I will say is, you know, we do look at these, and we try to, basically within our power to make sure that these are, you know, fiscally responsible projects. Obviously, I believe at this point in time with what we have, we're not going to come back to you with any supplementals. This will be ready to go next year.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, this area of Ridge Road, I believe from the traffic projections, it's showing like a two-lane, two left turn lanes that we needed to come off of Ridge Road to go on to 92 northbound. There's that much future traffic going to be projected in the 20-year timeframe.
So it's going to be five lanes across right there at 92?
So there'll be two, there'll be two lanes turning left. I believe there's a very small pocket going through, and again, that depends on the development of the offside, but there's also a separate, and there'd be a right turn lane that's going on to 92 south.
Well, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, George.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business. We don't have any public participations at this time. Any announcements or anything we need to know about? Advertisements or anything? Okay. There will not be an executive session, so I would like a motion to adjourn this work session.
Much intention.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Caker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.